We just have to start the meeting, so just kind of be quiet. Relax. Things go crazy after.
Call to order. What time is it?
Yeah. 7:15.
7:15. Can I get a motion to enter into executive session to discuss 2.0? 2.1?
Yeah, my glasses.
Closed executive session on 2.1 personnel matter, 2.2 contract matter, individual employee, 2.3 legal matter, CSCEA, 2.4 contract matter, individual employee, and 2.5 contract matter, individual employee.
So moved.
Second. Ball in favor? See you later.
See you.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.
It'll be great.
So we are entering into the public at 7:30, 7:00 p.m. We entered into executive session at 7:15 to discuss 2.1 personnel matter, administrative tenure, 2.2 contract matter, individual employee, 2.3 legal matter, CSCEA, 2.4 contract matter, individual employee, and 2.5 contract matter, individual employee. If we could all rise for the flag. Perfect. Great.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're moving on to 4.0 comments from the public. Any comments from the public?
About items not on the agenda.
About items not on the agenda. Hearing none. 4.1 comments.
No, that's it. And I think if I could just make a comment about items that are not on the agenda. But I want to thank our school administrators, our teachers, our staff members, and the members of our community for the support in helping us to navigate for children a way that they can feel safe and secure in our schools. We have all been reeling from the terrorist attacks in Israel, and I want to thank you for the time that you have spent with your teachers and with your staff in your buildings, your guidance counselors, and everyone to make sure that our community is supported. I know that this is a tragic time for so many people in this community, and the fact that we are Byram Hills means that we address this head-on and that we support our children. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank the board. It is a very difficult time to express to the community our support because people are experiencing the most horrific things ever in their lives. But knowing that this group has assembled to do the work that needs to be done to support our community and know that we will, with all of our power, denounce any kind of antisemitism means the world to all of us. So thank you for everything that you have done. And, you know, a moment just to reflect about people who have been and continue to be impacted by this. News that we're seeing about antisemitism occurring in the United States right now, this is something that as a school district, and I know the Board of Education supports this, we do not support that. We not only don't support that, we will be here for children to make sure that doesn't happen. So I want to thank you all for everything that you've done because I know Jen Layden spent better part of her entire weekend working with her social studies teachers, guidance counselors, Christina has been working closely with them, and social workers from special education, principals talking to their faculty, us sending resources out. This is one of the most difficult times we face as a school district in how best to support this community. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Moving on to 5.0, the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ball in favor? So moved. Moving on to consent agenda personnel, consent agenda special services, and consent agenda business. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Ball in favor? Okay, we're going to make a little move, just in the interest of time. We're going to move 12.0 new business now. Can I have our internal acceptance of our internal audit report, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Hauser, and I'm manager of CPA firm, Norah K. Smith, as well as the external auditors for the district. I would like to thank the district and the board for your continued confidence contracting our firm to perform the external audit for the fiscal year end of June 30, 2023. We audited financial statements for the district in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards as well as government ordinance standards. We also performed a single audit of the district's major federal award programs as well as an audit of the extra classroom activity funds on a cash-based accounting through fiscal year end of June 30, 2023. Lastly, we also issued a management letter presenting our findings and recommendations on improving accounting procedures and internal controls. As far as the satisfactory closing of books and records, we were able to perform an audit in the middle of August, which goes to show the business office had excellent cooperation and intention and were able to close out the books within a month and a half of the June 30 year end, which will allow the district to perform a timely filing of financial reports and financial statements with New York State by the October 15 deadline. I'm happy to say we issued a clean or a modified opinion on all the orders reports, which is to say that all the numbers of the financial statements are materially correct through state in accordance with professional standards. Regarding the financial precision of the district, the general fund annual budget was within the tax cap as promulgated by New York State and operated positively compared to the budget. General fund fund balances were all within reasonable and legal limits. There's a negative change in the fund balance this year, however, that has to do with the interfund transfer to the capital projects fund for capital projects, which left the district with capital assets netted depreciation charges of 64.9 million. Their apparent year capital project expenditures totaling 578,000, which related to various projects throughout the district and refunded by the transfer from the general fund. The district was able to reduce long-term indebtedness by two and a half million. The total other post-employment benefit obligations, which is determined by an actuary outside of the external audit, increased 10 million to a total of 157 million. Lastly, the total proportion of share of net pension liabilities, again an accurate return number, is 11 and a half million of liabilities compared to a total net pension asset of 40.3 million in the prior year, and this is mainly due to the return on investments for that plan. And lastly, regarding the management letter, as I said before, I'm very happy to say there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal control of the district, and this year we have no current recommendations or suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Norah K. Smith. And can I get a motion to accept the external audit report for 2022-23 fiscal year?
So moved.
Ball in favor?
And thank you so much to Susan and Kelly and everyone in our offices for helping to support a very timely audit.
My pleasure, as always.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, so now we're back on.
Craig, you are released.
Just wanted to join us.
Although it's actually going to be good.
Unless you really want to stay. Okay, moving on to 9.0, special report.
9, special report number one. I do this every year at this time. It's my favorite time. Board of Education recognition. And I'm happy to do this in the presence of all of our administrators here and filmed and shown tomorrow and people from the community. Hacha! People from the community who are here also. The Board of Education does work that they are not paid to do. They come to the Board of Education as members of a community wanting to serve all of the community's children and the community. This job requires conversations with the superintendent nights, weekends, when you are president or having multiple small meetings so that we can make sure that everything in this district is run as successfully as possible for our children. I want to thank you. As a Board of Education, you not only care about our entire school community, you also care about me. And that matters so much to me that I know that I can come into work every single day and I have a supportive board who recognizes the fact that I live here for the sake of children, right? So you don't have to do that. It is countless hours outside of your families, outside of, you know, your own hobbies and skills and things that you would want to pursue for your own interests, and instead you choose to be here for children. You have, what I ask every year is for you to put this on your refrigerator. Your, can I see yours for a sec? Oh, I have one here. Your School Board Recognition Week from New York State School Boards Association for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of our community. I especially want to go through with each board member, just a little thing. Jason, who is our vice president of our school board, is in his second year of his second term as a Board of Ed member. That means his fifth year on the Board of Ed for anybody who's having trouble, and is currently our vice president, and he served as vice president in '21, '22 as well, and can be found out at all soccer games and all events happening in Byram Hills High School right now. Mia, our president, is in her second year of her third term as a Board of Ed member, and that means her eighth year on the Board of Ed, and also has previously served as vice president, might I say, during COVID, and yet she still went on to take the position. Melissa Jacobs is in her second year of her first term. This is her second year on the Board of Education, and she was appointed to fill a board vacancy. And we're so happy you came with your experience in education and this community. Lori Cantor's not here, but she's in her first year of her third term as a Board of Education member, her seventh year on the Board of Ed. She has served as vice president to the board in her first term and then again in 2022-23. Scott Levy is in his third year of his third term. Three times three, folks? Nine. Ninth year on the Board of Ed. You're still not even close to either.
That's very true. I have an A. flag.
Nine years is like, is, you know, a lifetime. And previously served as president of the board three times?
Three times.
Three times. I have that right. And is also the president of the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association. So all of the advocacy that we are looking to do in Westchester and Putnam, Scott is the president of. So thank you, Scott. Lara Stangle is in her first year of her fourth term, and that makes her 10th year. Wow, Lara. And served as president of the board last year during '22-'23 school year and was a phenomenal president. And Petrie, last but certainly not least, in his third year of his first term, third year on the Board of Education. Might I just say to everyone, I appreciate you every day, and so does our community. So thank you for everything that you're doing. I hope you enjoy your bees' cakes cupcake. A former Byram Hills student who is now a successful business owner in town, and I hope, Jason, if you could hold that up. Thank you to Kevin Guadati, who got those for us, and you should have some nice charcuterie board at home.
Thank you.
And a plaque for your fridge. And thank you also very, very much. Somebody else will. I'm going to bring Lori her cupcake.
Thank you all. It is our pleasure to serve this community. It is a labor of love. We do it for not just our children, we do it for everybody's children, and it's, you know, it's been a very rewarding experience. It's a lot of, it is a lot of work, but I find it very, I can't speak for everybody. I find it very rewarding.
I think every board member sees the value in somebody helping to steer a community, right?
Thank you for the charcuterie board and the cupcake.
Thank you, Kevin. Where's Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. So moving on to...
Special report number two. I could take over.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Special report number two, curriculum conversation. This is the time for our administrators to come and have conversations with the board about the goals that we developed for the year. All of our goals are always targeted toward board goals and also targeted toward the kids that are in the specific schools for which the goals are developed. What I like about the goal-setting process is that it's an iterative process, and our administrators with Tim in the lead here take the time to look at their goals and revise goals as necessary based upon the needs of the kids in their buildings at that time. I think that they are absolutely reachable, yet incredibly aspirational goals that we set, and I think that that's part of what makes our system so strong, is this goal-setting and continuing with the goal-setting. So I am going to turn it over to Tim, who has worked with our administrators. We were over, having a discussion about it just before, practicing and being ready for tonight's conversation.
Thank you, and thanks for being here, everyone. This is an incredible team, and I just am so privileged to work with all of you. Thank you for working with the teachers every day, with our support staff, with our students. It is incredible what you do and what we accomplish in Byram Hills. And our goals document, the board has a copy. I gave you a hard copy last month, and there's an electronic copy in your packet if you need to reference that. It's an incredible document, which starts at our administrative retreat in the summer. So we work together, we reflect on the previous year's work and our goals and our successes with those goals, and then we collaborate on building those new set of goals for the new year. We always start with, not that, wrong presentation, but at the end, that's why. Let me go to the beginning. This is my favorite self-portrait of a student in fourth grade. We start with our mission statement. We always lead with this because all of our goals start here and build on this. And so this is the foundation of all the work we do as we work every day to accomplish our mission. And then from that, the board writes goals, and then we develop our administrative goals that then lead to teacher-developed goals. And ultimately, the hope is that that impacts students in the classroom. All the research around goal-setting in schools is about having a tightly aligned system. And so that's what I feel is part of what makes us really successful, is the collaboration with all of you and working together to make sure our goals are aligned to our mission and that they impact kids in the classroom. So hopefully, what you'll hear today is us talking about that impact that it's having and how we're achieving those goals. So I invite the board at any time, jump in. I'll get us started and facilitate, but, you know, it's your conversation as well. If you have questions, jump in, and if it's related to what we're talking about or not, that's okay. If there's something on your mind you want to pursue based on our goals. So again, thank you for everything you all do every day for our kids. Let's start with the high school. I usually start at the elementary and build up, but I like to shake, I like to be on the toes a little bit. So we'll go to the high school, and so Chris, this is your eighth year.
Eighth year as principal.
Eighth year as principal. So sort of a reflective question of you now at eight years, which is a long time for a principal. What do you see? Because I know you, Chris often can cite the mission statement by memory, first of all, and he cites it frequently at meetings. If you've been to a meeting with Chris, you know he will recite the mission statement. He does live by that, and I appreciate that. What would you say in your eight years have been some significant accomplishments you feel that you've been able to achieve that really embody the work toward that North Star of our mission statement? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question. And once again, thank you to all members of the board. I know that you all have students who are in high school right now, and I believe that we are the only school who can say that, huh?
Wow!
Yeah, looking back and reflecting on eight years as principal, I think what I am most proud of is our community's acceptance of disrupting the status quo. So by all measures, as we've seen, you know, even going back to when I was an assistant principal, we were doing, being, you know, we were really successful. And I think not resting and allowing ourselves to get comfortable and continually asking, were we aligning with our mission? And if not, what could we do that would better align to those outcomes? And so we look at things like the number of new courses that we've offered over the course of that time. And, you know, if you look at some of our other districts in the area, the number of courses that we've offered and the programs that we've started are far above where they were. So we're aligning with the needs of the students and with what we believe they will require as 21st century learners. Certainly, we look at the work of challenge success and how we use that lens to really invigorate the community to take on the idea of changing our schedule. And it's funny, I was just thinking right now, we don't have any of our students in the high school who actually had the old schedule, so they don't have anything to compare it to. If we look at our seniors, they were there during the hybrid, the hybrid schedule, and now we're in our third year of that, of the new master schedule.
We pause you for a moment there. You can go on, as I know you have other things you want to say. But with that schedule, do you feel it's meeting the goals of challenge success? Because that was a big impetus for the shift to longer blocks of time, slowing the day down for students, giving community lunch, some of the other pieces you put in. Do you feel it's achieving what you want?
Yeah, and it's a great question. We always are asking that question of whether it's doing what we had intended it to do. And so the big things that came out of that, obviously, were looking at the lens through challenge success at the overall student experience. So academic engagement, student workload, sleep, parental expectations, teacher care, extracurricular involvement, academic integrity, are those things being impacted positively with the new master schedule. So some of those things that we implemented, we can say for sure they have. We know that the sleep was definitely impacted when we implemented office hours that were flexible for our students. So when we were getting students only sleeping six hours and 15 minutes a night, now we're seeing that move up towards seven hours, even though the American Medical Association recommends eight to 10 for kids in that age group. We look at the longer class periods, 64 minutes, which actually now allows our students to only have to deal with five classes per day. But even within those 64 minutes, they're no longer theoretically just getting direct instruction. There's a lot of different modes of instruction that are going on, whether it be conferencing, peer-to-peer editing, workshop modeling. Those things are happening in the classrooms, and we're seeing that more and more now being three, three years in. The universal lunch, I want to just say that every student does have a seat. We do have a seat for everybody. Now, they don't all choose to take those seats. They sit amongst, in the hallway with their friends, and I can really say that during that 43 minutes that the building does exhale. And the pacing of the entire building, now that we only have four transitions during the day, definitely changed the overall sense of being on a hamster wheel to being in a more designed learning environment.
Chris, at some point, do you do another survey, another challenge to try to compare results, although it is a different cohort, so it's not perfect, but it could be an interesting data point?
Yeah, and we did do that, but what we thought of when we got the results back was that there was probably a little bit too much of the hybrid and the pandemic schedule in there as well.
Right.
But they recommend really every three years to do it, and that way you're going to get every cohort at least once in the high school, if not twice.
Great. Other accomplishments? I know you have a few things, other things you might want to say.
I think looking at how we've, how we've approached leadership and after the board had established leadership as part of our mission, looking at what our students are doing currently, what we could do for them, and how we can embed that in the curriculum. We had such an interesting conversation throughout our faculty meetings last year about what defines a leader and could all students actually get to the point where we could say that they were leaders? And I thank, you know, my colleague Melissa Stahl for highlighting some of these kids that I might not have thought of leaders, but the way that she approached it helped me to see that we are really getting kids to the position where they are leaders, whether it be traditional capital L leaders, as my colleague Lisa likes to speak about, or whether it's in some other, some other fashion.
Right, because we're looking at behaviors and skills of leadership as opposed to just the position of leadership.
Yeah, I think too often we, we were in the mindset that leadership comes naturally.
Right.
And what we really worked on last year was that skill development of how do we develop the skills of leaders through our work, either in extracurricular activities or even within the classroom.
And you talk about disrupting. Generally, in education, we don't like to disrupt. You have been a disruptor, changing a master schedule was a big disruption to a block-type schedule, but you're doing it with that lens of a framework by challenge success before us. I know you're taking on another big disruptor this year. Do you want to talk about it or not?
Sure. Well, I think it's, it's an important thing to address where with Tim last year, we were able to join up with a tri-states group that was looking at grading for equity. And this year, what we're going to do is use the text by Joe Feldman, grading for equity as our anchor, and we're going to allow our faculty to use that as a lens into their own grading practices. And I think what we want to do is to make sure that, not that everybody's grading in the same way, but that we can align why we're grading. If we look at what we're doing in schools, it's really about the curriculum, you know, what we're going to teach, the instruction, how we're going to teach it, and then the assessment, how do, how do we know that they taught it? And grading lives in a place in all of those different areas, but it's really one of those things that's such a hot topic, I think, coming off of the pandemic, when we really couldn't grade kids in traditional ways, that it's exposed some of these different methods that go into grading. And I'm really happy for our faculty to be able to sort of reflect on their own grading practices, looking through the lens of equity and fairness and, and looking at it being sort of accessible to all in the community.
And I think to just frame for you and our community, when we're using equity in this particular context, it's talking about all students having access to equal opportunity for grades, and that's what we mean by that, that migrating practices and Scots might be not so different that a student would have a different chance of getting an A in my class versus yours. That's what we mean by equity, that we all have equal access to the range of grades because we're grading similarly and basing in the same framework. So that's what, we're using that context, just to clarify that. Until you dive into the book and read what Feldman says about it, it's, we start to hack his framework. Chris, just one more thing for you is about any challenges you foresee. Certainly, these conversations can be challenging, but you take them on in very methodical ways and bring teachers into those conversations, which I commend, is you always have committees around these things. Like when you did the schedule, you had a scheduling committee, and now you have a grading committee, so you use your resources around you. What do you see as other challenges that high schools face that you're facing? It could be universal or something unique to us that you feel are some challenges?
Yeah, so I'll put it out there, and I know my colleagues will jump all over it, but I, I think it's exciting that we're at the, sort of the, the leading edge of AI and what that means to not only instruction, but to assessment and to sort of the college process. I think that it's really exciting to sort of see how our students are using it, to see how our faculty is using it, and to, to just get a sense of where that's going to go. And I think we're really at the beginning stages of that, and it's a really exciting time. So it is going to be a challenge for us to come to terms with that and to, to get to a really comfortable meeting.
Sure. I think it's a similar feeling to when Google came out with their search engine, when calculators came out, math education, it's that feeling of unease at first, and we got to ban this or we have to restrict it, or I don't know what to do with this. It seems cool, but I'm not sure. So I think we're at that stage of figuring that out. So let's dive into this a little bit, because I think it's interesting for our community to hear about something that I think people are reading about and hearing about in schools. First of all, does anyone want to take a crack at defining AI? Chris, just put it out there.
Oh, I've got two people that can. Kevin and Dwayne just presented to the Council of School Administrators all the superintendents in Lower Westchester last Friday, and they did absolutely phenomenal job. So I think either one of them can take on this question, unless you have somebody else you're thinking of.
Nope, nope. I think that many people here could define it.
I'll start with that. I think AI, as most things, we start with the vocabulary, making sure we're talking about things correctly and using the right terms for that. AI has become synonymous with, with tools within AI. There's actually, to locate where we are in the continuum of development of AI, I think it's important to note that AI is not new. It's something that we've seen for a long time. If you think of it in three different phases, a narrow AI, artificial intelligence, moving to general artificial intelligence, and eventually into something called superart. moving to general artificial intelligence and eventually into something called super artificial intelligence. Narrow artificial intelligence is something that is, um, software that accomplishes a very narrowly focused task. And a good example of that would be Siri. We picked up our phones and said, Siri, can you help me navigate homes? Siri, can you put this on my grocery list, et cetera, et cetera. Very narrowly focused task. Where we're, where we're in now is artificial general intelligence. We're actually somewhere between narrow and general intelligence. Where our artificial intelligence can start to mirror certain things that, uh, that humans can do. Summarizing ideas and is a good example of that. And one of the things we've learned about this is that to get the most out of the artificial intelligence where we are right now in the development of that, it comes down to asking the right questions, just like all of education. This is one of the great truths of education is that asking the right questions will yield the right answers or you're the best answers, which oftentimes are good questions, incidentally. And so we've been doing quite a bit of focus on developing our skills and asking the right questions. And so when you hear terms like chat GPT, um, that is a very narrowly focused type of AI. That's a, that's generative AI, meaning that it generates some response to the prompts that you ask. And I've been, uh, very fortunate to have joined the team here where some work has already been going on. I know Dwayne's been doing some absolutely amazing work with the English teachers at the high school in exactly that, helping to develop the skills necessary to ask really good questions. Um, and before we get into that, I'll just say very quickly is that a good entry point to learning how to lead with AI or leaning into the use of AI is to think about the extent to which AI can really help us to augment our instructional practices. And so it's not just about how we're using AI with students, it's also about how do we use it as practitioners to help increase our ability to meet the needs of all the students in front of us? How do we ask the right prompts to help build our lessons so that our students can access the content a little bit more?
Before we jump into some examples, let me just pause and have you talk about it from your lens of the data privacy officer?
Yes.
Staff and our students having access to these artificial intelligence tools. What's the role, you know, where are we with data privacy in that respect?
As I mentioned last time, I was here with all you, the Byron Hill's security posture is quite strong when it comes to data privacy and security. And that is also true when it comes to the use of generative AI tools like chat GPT. Unfortunately, well, I'll, I'll talk about who has access. Our faculty does have access to the specific tool chat GPT, but we do filter that for our student use. And the reason why we filter chat GPT in particular for student use is because if you've used it yourself, you know that in order to actually start prompting it with questions, it does require you to create an account. And to create an account requires students to put in a personally identifiable information in PII, which is something that's a requirement that we take protection against. And so chat GPT on district level devices is, is not permitted for use. But we were careful to look for ways to allow students to engage with generative AI. And so there are other tools out there other than chat GPT on that, that are accessible for use on our district devices. And the, the most robust one, um, that we've utilized is, um, well, we have two actually. Grammarly Go is one that we have embedded within our email creation or within our Gmail suite. Uh, but we also have the use of Bing Chat, thank you very much. Which is, uh, uses the same kind of under the hood technology as chat GPT. That does not require students to create an account or leverage their personal identifiable information to engage with it.
Great, thanks. And so talking about the use, Dwayne, I know you've done a lot of reading and experimentation with this. And also when, when this came out last December, the first obvious way that students may use this is to write an essay for them. And there were lots of examples of how AI was writing essays. So it became, the English department was very intrigued by this. Can you talk a bit about your perspective on this and the conversations and work that you've been doing with your department?
Sure. I mean, I think when I first heard about this, this tool that was coming out, you know, there were a lot of educators that were fearful. There were a lot of educators that thought this is going to, you know, completely undo what I thought were some gains that teachers were making over the pandemic in terms of how they actually integrated technology into their classrooms. And all of a sudden you have this tool that now can do work that, you know, will, will alleviate the need for students to have to learn how to write. You have, you know, all of the naysayers that were out there. But I, I was immediately taken by it for a couple of reasons. Number one, people were actually talking about language again and they were talking about writing and they were talking about what makes good writing. And I think those conversations still have to dominate the landscape of our classrooms. That still has to be part of it. Uh, the students that have used generative AI, many of them will come back and tell you that it doesn't capture their personal voice. It doesn't capture who they are as individuals. So sure, that part of it is always going to be a concern. I think even before, you know, tools like chat GPT came out, you know, we still had concerns when we sent students home with a computer. You know, what was coming back to us when the students came back? Was it the help of, you know, a brother who, you know, may have had good intentions? Or was it, you know, a parent sitting beside the student and working with them? You know, so when we looked at chat GPT as a department, you know, our first goal was to sort of take out of the equation that we are trying to catch any kind of kids who are doing anything, um, you know, with, with ill intent. That wasn't the goal. But how can we take this tool and help students become better at critical thinking? Help teachers become better at planning their classroom lessons? Help them become better at executing lessons in the classroom that actually freed them up and gave them the time to meet with students individually and learn more about their skills as writers. And, and to me, that's where it became incredibly exciting. I spent most of the summer playing around with prompts, uh, coming up with all sorts of wonderful ways to use chat GPT in the classroom. Hoping that, of course, some of the tools would sign off on our data privacy and we'd be able to run right into the classroom and use them. Uh, I'll give you a good example. I was able to prompt, um, chat GPT in this instance by having it say, look, you are an experienced English educator and you have worked with high school students for decades now. Ask me what book I'm currently studying. And then wait for my response. And so I typed in, I'm currently reading Davey Salinger's The Catcher in the Rye. Um, and I continued to prompt it and I said, engage in a conversation with me about this book. Where you not only ask me for specific direct quotations from the chapters that I've been reading, but you want me to talk to you about the themes and how I can make text to self connections, text to world connections. You know, all the things that we're supposed to be doing as English teachers. And I went back and forth and I think the conversation probably lasted somewhere around two hours. Uh, of me prompting, uh, the, the chatbot, getting responses. At the end of it, I said, can you give me feedback on how I did? Tell me whether or not the use of direct quotations, um, was done well. And find areas for me where I can improve so I can become better at having classroom discussions just like this. And so all of a sudden, as an educator, I'm sort of blown away. I said, it's not perfect, but by no stretch does this replace human interaction. But I'm thinking about, you know, down the road, how does this become an avenue for that student? And we always have them in our classes, who doesn't want to become part of that large group discussion? Doesn't feel comfortable raising his or her hand in the midst of that classroom moment? Or maybe just takes a little bit more time to sort of think through and process what it is that they're listening to their classmates talk about before they can jump into the conversation. And now we have a tool that's going to allow them to have just as rich, if we're talking about equity and, um, just as rich conversations as they can possibly have. And we as teachers now can have the freedom to now jump around and say, well, how can I help you get better at the prompting? How can I help you locate better evidence? So it became just this wonderful tool. I'm, I'm always looking at technology as something that we can ultimately help students become more responsible users of technology. So that's the other thing that our teachers are certainly working on right now. How do we help students understand the limits of generative AI? How do we help them understand the purposes of using it? Where can it be of service to them as writers? Uh, so, you know, I'm just, I'm just floored by what it has the capacity to do. Knowing that there certainly are people that can use it for ill intent.
Dwayne, just a very interesting question for you about, uh, generative AI and what it might do during the lifetime of our students that are in high school right now. So you think about all the industries that it'll likely transform. We don't know exactly how, but directionally, we know it will. Whether you want to go into law or teaching or medicine, whatever the field, there's going to be layers of it that will be, in essence, like maybe almost obsolete by, but. And is there space? I don't know where it would be, but if it's in global scholars or if it's in startup or if it's just in an English class, suppose there's space for students to think about that as they, you know, try to kind of chart the direction that they want to go.
Yeah, I had, I had a great conversation with one of my English teachers, Brian Horn, who teaches juniors and seniors at the high school. And he was, um, I mean, pickleball's taken over this world and he's a big, big pickleball fan. But he was having a conversation with a gentleman, I guess he was, uh, playing against that particular tournament. Who was somebody, and I, I think I'm getting this right, who worked for Meta when they were actually creating some of the generative AI that we see. And this was about five to six years ago. So what's brand new to some of us was not new to him at all. In fact, he was talking to Brian about some of the things that are coming down the pike and, and talking about the fact that there are so many different, um, vehicles that are going to radically transform our work world, uh, our interactions. Uh, and he knows a little bit about where these things are going, um, but they're, they're just changing so drastically. And we talked about this with 21st century technology as English teachers. We don't know what the world's gonna look like down the road. We just have to be flexible enough to help students understand how to navigate this uncertainty. So I mean, your question, Scott, is a great one. It's like, I don't know where this is gonna necessarily go. Which companies are gonna ultimately, um, find a product that's going to transform everything we do in education? But I do know that we are working on teaching students the critical thinking to be able to say, look, how can I use the tools that are available to me? So that I can become the best thinker, the best person, uh, the best citizen that I can possibly be.
Circling back to something like, Dwayne, is what you said, how in order to ameliorate the, the, I guess, the problem of, of writing at home, because you have access to this platform. So now the students, and I have one of them right, high schoolers, that's writing essays in the school and saying that she has to go during office hours and lunch and so that's a very fractured process to write in. And I'm just curious what that looks like and how that's impacting students and the flow of writing, just out of curiosity.
So I'll put it to you, there, there's probably a number of different experiences that I would hope that a student coming through our program gets as a writer.
Right.
Some of that is going to be writing informally in a journal. Writing that, for instance, doesn't get graded, doesn't get assessed, but just is a space for students to do some thinking and to explore those ideas. Um, there is that traditional research model paper that we have, um, which, um, you know, in, in many ways, a lot of what my teachers are doing is working with students, uh, in the classroom. And that's actually part of a shift that we're trying to make. Which is that for a long time, you didn't get feedback on your writing until you had finished the product.
Right.
Right? So you've spent, whether it was a day, a week or a month, working on a, a particular paper. And by the time you were finished with it, have forgotten everything you were doing, the feedback came back to you. And part and parcel, that was sort of the life of an English teacher. You walked home with eighty to a hundred papers. It took you some time to get through them. But I think what we have is an opportunity here to now get that feedback in real time. Whether it's the conversations that teachers are having while they're sitting beside a student who's working and they can actually do some of that heavy lifting while they're doing the writing in their classroom next to them. Or it's even down the road as AI becomes even more, uh, robust and powerful, um, having it become a partner in that feedback process. So that's a part of it too. I think what you're mentioning in specifics are things that we also know we have to prepare students for. So you take a timed piece of writing like a Regents exam. The kinds of essays that students have, you know, traditionally had to write for some of the biggest, you know, whether it's the SAT before they got rid of it, but the ACT still offers out those essays, those have to be on-demand writing. So there's still gonna be some on-demand writing that happens in the English classroom. And that will be timed writing that occurs, whether it's in the span of our sixty-four minute classes. Um, you know, some students may have to come back and have been given license by the teachers to come back and finish it if they need to during office hours, if they need more time. Because one of the things we don't want to do is just, you know, say that it's over, sixty-four minutes are up, it must be finished. And, uh, we want those ideas to continue to flourish. But like any good writing, that comes with planning. So it shouldn't feel disjointed if you have planned what it is you want to say.
Right.
If you've come into that process with a really good roadmap for where you're going. And I mean, that comes back to where AI can be helpful too. AI can be a really helpful generator of those roadmaps and those outlines to help students get where they need to go. So it's, it's a process for sure. Teachers are definitely navigating it, but I know that my department is not, at this point, throwing computers out the, out the window and saying that all writing has to be pen to paper. Uh, there should be a mix.
Yeah.
Are they doing it? Are you writing at home or?
Yeah, they do. They do. Yeah.
There's something else about AI and specifically what Dwayne's talking about with AI for feedback as well. Is that our teachers spend an enormous amount of time and energy building strong classroom communities and building relationships with students. And that's all, of course, what we hope will happen in our classrooms. Sometimes those strong relationships make it difficult to provide feedback, corrective feedback to students because it becomes a value judgment of their, their personal skill or anything like that. What we're thinking about related to AI is also the extent to which AI can help us provide feedback that's received cognitively by students as opposed to emotionally. We know the research on good feedback in classrooms means to be timely, relevant and must provide a cognitive response and not an emotional one. And when you work and exist in an environment like this with such caring class communities, that last part of being cognitive and less emotional can be a challenge. And AI is proving to be a pretty strong tool to help that and help drive that growth process for students as well. So that's another concept that we're thinking about, uh, with the use of AI, specifically targeting it on feedback for learning.
And I see that in some new math applications that are talking about using it as a personal tutor, where it won't solve a problem for you, but it'll ask you questions. And it's prompting you and based on your response, it'll adjust its response to you and what it tells you. You know, whether it thinks you know something or that's to back up and ask you some basic questions. So it's a really interesting, innovative technology that I think will have some amazing impact.
It's not going away.
Yeah, we're being really thoughtful. It's not. So, um, and one, an early adopter of this was a Wharton Business School professor who came out right away with policy about it and talked about it a lot in his class, who requires students to use it. He wrote an article this summer talking about how it's allowing him to ask more demanding, challenging questions of his students. Where he requires them to use AI for feedback and to improve upon their models. So it's really interesting that I think we're sort of aligning our thinking in that way. So if anyone else wants to say anything about AI before we go on? But talking about disruption, let me go over to Christina, the college process. She's so disruptive.
But thinking about how the pandemic has really disrupted college admissions. And it's been a lot, I read a lot and you can't go through an education journal about what we're reading about the impact of college admissions and the pandemic and a lot of the changes that are happening. AI being one of, um, untimed SATs and ACTs are all things that we're reading about and just the trends all changing. Everything's mixed up now. And I'm wondering, Christina, if you could talk a little bit about what you're hearing and seeing from your connections and the admissions folks coming in and talking to us, what are you learning about some of these changes in trends and how are we responding to those?
Actually, just sit, sat in on a, a meeting, Vanderbilt University did a, a great, um, admissions update. But they also jumped into the major trends that they're seeing in college admissions and it was really, uh, well done. Obviously, talking about affirmative action and Supreme Court, uh, changes there. And how, um, colleges really have to look to find ways to bring diverse groups of students onto campus and find ways to reach students differently than they have in the past. And just hearing what, uh, you know, colleges and universities are doing, you know, as far as diversity and equity is very interesting. Uh, one of the other things is the test optional piece. And, you know, what really came out of that during the pandemic was that students, uh, it really drove up the number of applications for, for particular colleges and universities. So now colleges are faced with, well, how do we really tell who's really interested in, in our school? And, and, um, uh, we're having some very rich conversations with our representatives that are coming into Byron Hills. And, uh, we've focused on one question with, with their college reps and we're asking them, think about the last admissions cycle and think about a student's application. And we're looking for, what was it? What was the compelling piece about that student's application that really, uh, made you change the course of action with their application? Uh, that made you really have pause with that student? And, um, you know, we really are looking for very specific information. I will have that information once we digest it a little bit. But, um, those are just, you know, certainly some of the things, AI, absolutely. I know colleges and universities are actually have policies about AI and its usage. They really see it as a tool, as a resource, uh, for students to, um, to put together a college. to put together a college application. But they are absolutely looking for an authentic voice coming through. And that's where our work with students, to help them use AI as a tool and not to be the end-all, be-all, is where our work is taking us right now.
And so that work your counselors do with students is sort of the same. It's like, is your college essay in your application really selling who you are and your personality?
Right. Right, exactly. Is it authentic? And we might actually bring up Gravelgo or something like that and use it with a student to see how it could be used, to come up with different themes, to show an alignment among, you know, we know that aligning what a student is interested, what they spend their time doing outside of school, the courses that they are taking in school, that alignment, and then picking a major at a college or university and bringing that full circle for a college, we know that that's really important. And I think that's one of the ways that AI could help us maybe make those connections that we might be struggling to make for a student.
Question before the pandemic to now. So before the pandemic, though it was never a perfect science to figure out whether a student that's applying to whatever school, let's say, early, is going to get in or get deferred or get rejected. It was arguably a lot easier than it is now post the pandemic and now post the Supreme Court case, where we really don't know what the impact will be. And the essay prompts have changed and the types of essays, everything's changed. So I guess just in the process of advising students, I guess, what do you do? Is Navian still a useful tool or is it almost like not that useful? And going back to the challenge of success and the stress and anxiety and, you know, work in our high school, has the process gotten worse or is it really just about the same as it always was?
I think it's really, I think it's really just about the same. I think there's uncertainty. What one of the admissions people at Vanderbilt was saying was like, all these, you know, in years past, we could always look back a few years and see what a trend would be. There's no looking back on this time to see what it can predict for us going forward. And so being comfortable with that uncertainty is really kind of a place where we've had to live. I would say that we are pleasantly surprised by the information that we are putting out to families in this district and their willingness to look at things differently and understand the state of, the landscape of college admission. One prime example of that is that we typically have about five to 10 students who would apply international in a given year. And this last year, we had nine students apply to 23 schools internationally. Of the nine students who applied, eight actually matriculated at an international school. One prime example of students and families coming to us and saying, I want to do this differently. I realize I need to do this differently. Help me do this differently. Great conversations.
Can I also ask a question? I know that during the pandemic, or maybe even a little bit before, a lot of colleges were going test optional. And I know that a lot of people, there's a lot of questions swirling now about, are they staying that way? Are they moving back towards testing again? And what's the vibe that you're getting? What answers are you getting from the admissions officers that you're speaking to?
I think, I think colleges and universities are looking at it. I think they probably were going to make a determination about that. I think with the new changes with affirmative action, they're all kind of said, we're going to hold off, just let's weather the storm this year. Let's look at, you know, what happens. But colleges are planning to put out, you know, kind of their statement on, you know, how long test optional will be, you know, a thing at their college or university.
Just wanted to say also that your, the website that the guidance department's been working on is exceptional, and it really targets all four years, so from freshman. Like, we were at the meeting recently and Christina spoke about it. And it's so helpful because some parents are eager to know even if their child is in eighth grade and ninth grade, what a roadmap looks like for college. And, you know, some parents are just starting to look at it during their junior year. And it really reflects both of those feelings for the parents and for the community and for the student as well. So I think it's done very well. I want to board. Thanks you for that.
We just added a new tab. It's called the Pulse on College Admissions. And it actually takes a deep dive into last year's college admissions cycle, what we learned from college reps, and then sort of our response to those key takeaways. So that's brand new. If you haven't seen it yet, it's on there. And I certainly will be doing a lot to highlight the incredible work of our counselors.
Thanks for mentioning the website, Lyra. I think it's a terrific resource that Christina has worked really hard on over the last several years to put that together. So it's a great resource for our community. Visit the guidance department website, webpage on our website. So thank you. I know Chris wants to highlight a couple other initiatives at the high school. So I'll ask Melissa Stahl and Jen Layden to speak to these two items. These are recognition that students can receive for focusing in particular areas that New York State provides, called a SEAL. The SEAL is something that gets put on a student's transcript, or technically their diploma, but it goes on the transcript that students met some criteria in order to show some specialization. So let's talk about by literacy first, with the SEAL of by literacy. So first of all, Melissa, can you talk about what that SEAL represents? What it means to get that SEAL? And then what are, how do students receive it?
Sure. So the SEAL of by literacy says that a student is literate in both English and a second language, whichever language that may be. And they will achieve it with certain criteria. They have to, there's a point system, I'm not going to explain it, but they, our students, in speaking with Dwayne, we do have a committee for the SEAL of by literacy. In speaking with Dwayne, our students, the majority of our students will obviously get the SEAL criteria for English Language Arts. The question comes to world language. And if your student is in checkpoint C, which is in Level 5 or Pre-AP, if they take the fifth year of their language and they pass that with a V+, and they do a culminating project, they can apply for the SEAL of by literacy upon graduation. The more exciting thing about the SEAL for me is that it really has an opportunity to showcase the diverse languages. We have 20 different languages in our homes here in Byram Hills, and those students can also apply for the SEAL. They do have to do a culminating project based on that. They have to do some assessments to prove their proficiency in the language. But the students that have come forward so far, since we put out the video, have, are capable of applying for that SEAL and getting it upon graduation also. So it's exciting for us to have that showcase.
And you have some students now in what languages?
Oh, I'm so excited. I'm so excited about this. I'm sorry I'm going to get all red. So we currently have a student who wants to get it in German, who is already qualified with her assessment. We have a student qualified in Chinese. We have a student who has to do Hebrew. And now they just have to do their culminating projects. And I have to verify their English Language Arts, but I'm sure that's all going to check out. In addition to our French, Italian, and Spanish students.
So that's an opportunity for students to highlight their body language.
And we haven't even spoken directly to the students yet. That's happening at the end of the week. So that's just from the video that we put out, that we've had these people come forward, which is wonderful.
Right. So it's a great opportunity for students. Then shifting to the SEAL of civic readiness. Jen, could you speak about what it is and how students obtain it?
Sure. So New York State also offers a SEAL of civic readiness, which allows students to demonstrate a high level of proficiency in both civic knowledge as well as civic mindset and civic actions. And students also receive a number of points. And it's anything from certain coursework that they've taken, some proficiency and mastery on Regents exams. But it's also on engagement in work experience, extracurricular activities, internships that align with a civic responsibility. It's a long-term projects that they've done to sort of make a difference. And what we've decided to do, this is our first year offering it at Byram Hills, so we're letting students have three opportunities to apply. We had a number of students apply by the end of September so they could put it on their transcript for early admission. And then we have a second deadline in December, and then finally at the end of the year. So sort of depending on where you are in your accumulation of the points, we kind of want to meet you there and give you a chance to be recognized. So we just finished reviewing the applications for the first round, and we have 22 students who earned the SEAL, so far as first go. So we're excited.
Now, students can begin that process as early as middle school?
Yeah. Actually, in eighth grade, they can earn their first point. This is like a big hit for the eighth graders, that they were earning a point for their diploma seal by doing a special project. So our last year eighth graders were the first ones to do it.
Right, right. Now, you've been doing work around civic readiness and aligning it. So you're not looking at it's just get a SEAL and that's it? But you've really made it integrated into your curriculum, 6 through 12?
Exactly.
Can you talk about some of that work?
Yeah, we spent the majority of last year looking at that and sort of identifying, what does it really mean to be a citizen? What are the skills? What are the mindsets? And where does that live in each of our curriculums? So as a 6 to 12 department, we did that work. And then each grade level has instruction and assessment that aligns from a sixth grade project that focuses on being a global citizen, seventh grade project that the students pair up with AP government students and look at how Congress works, to an 11th grade project where students look at a local issue in our community and develop an action to address it.
It's great work in really making it deep into curriculum. Now, just one more question when I read through your goals. You talk about work in your department around three areas: relevance, depth, and engagement. So can you talk about those two? Chris talks about the master schedule at the high school, shifting to longer periods as a way that we can go deeper in the curriculum. So I'm intrigued about that connection as well.
Yeah, that's something we've been working on for a couple of years now. And I think it came, one of those good things that came out of the pandemic, we realized, let's really look at what we really want students to know and understand. And by framing everything around what's relevant, either to their lives or the world today, that does increase engagement. But also by looking more carefully at, particularly at these larger survey classes that we teach, where are there opportunities to go deeper? So students have a deeper understanding of concepts, whether it's through looking at different case studies or comparing different things and sort of trying to move beyond sort of the spray of history and looking a little bit more of depth of understanding. So they understand, why do we study this and how is this relevant to our world today? You know, in my own life.
So you're able to bring in the current events as well as looking at the historical thinking, you know, where do we start?
Exactly. Really trying to frame the instruction around what is the current situation in our world and how does knowledge of history contribute to our understanding of that?
Great. Thanks for sharing that. Let's go down. I'm thinking about the middle school now. And you talked a bit about the middle school. Jump to Kim and Angelo. In your goals, you talk about, and it's part of your essential question, about healthy mindsets for students. So I'm wondering about some of the work you've been doing around really developing. I mean, knowing those middle school students like Kim and Angelo, and they do everything in that middle school. Your middle school teachers really address the needs of kids at that age, which are really unique. They're in the middle for a reason. And I'm wondering what those healthy mindsets look like and what the work you're doing this year around supporting students.
So we know how important it is that our kids feel part of the community. When they do, they're more present to learn and engage. So we sat back and we've been thinking over the past couple of years on how do we continually build community? How do we continue students to feel like they belong? And so we spent some time this summer, we did a summer institute with our teachers, because one of the first places we're going to start is with our faculty. Are we talking the same language? Are we starting to develop our beliefs or furthering our beliefs about how to support our students? So we did a great summer institute with Peter Nelson, who's from Facing History ourselves. But he really challenged our faculty to think about, how do we engage our kids? How do we have them a sense of belonging in academic setting, in a social setting? And even physically, how does our building look and feel so that our students feel like they belong?
Talk about the changes you've made in the building that help highlight that and some other changes in the work.
So we're continuing, we're continuing to build on the work that we've done with X-Pods and the work we've done with SDLs.
Student-directed learning.
Student-directed learning. So this year, our teachers are offering even more in terms of workshops in our SDLs, where we have a murals project, a group of kids who want to go through the building and change what their environment looks like or add to their environment. We have our tech department offering courses in robotics and 3D printing, where students can self-select things that they're interested in doing and getting more of their character out and doing things that they want to share with us or that they're good at. And then we also have extra help during SDL time, where kids can choose where their needs are and meet their needs and get that stress and anxiety out within the school day and, you know, go on.
And our kids can choose, like, they can go to, I think feeling belonging is, whether it's like a group or just another student that you feel like you're connected with. They can make that choice during student-directed learning time. They can go with their friend and work on math and be challenged by a teacher. And then we also spent some time with our vision team. We developed a vision team, a group of our teachers who came in the summer. And we said, okay, this isn't to add to what we're doing, like, what's more initiative? It's like, let's look at what we're doing and how can we further it? And X-Pod was one of those areas. And we spent time talking about what we should keep and how we should continue this sense of belonging and build it through X-Pod. So we've done very explicit things at times with our X-Pods to, again, build that sense of belonging. If you look around, we have, the first thing that they did was they took a selfie of the whole group. And if you walk around the school on all of our TV monitors, they will see pictures of themselves with other groups of students. So those visual representations also exist. We're going to have each X-Pod maybe come up with a slogan. And then we're hoping that we can build a wall where they can see the slogans that they've chosen and that are affirming and let them feel again like they have power and control and involvement in their environment in all the ways possible.
And we're also doing low ropes courses with our X-Pods, which Kim and I are going this weekend, next weekend, with our seventh and sixth graders.
Do you do low ropes with them or?
Nope. We're not allowed. We're not allowed.
I aided and pushed them. So this is an opportunity for kids to work together with other kids that they've known, but they haven't actually worked with as closely to get some task accomplished, you know, and be successful at it and collaborate together.
It's about collaboration, teamwork, helping in that way. So you were talking about this sense of belonging, making, helping kids feel they have a place in the school, that they are part of the school. What's this, how do you get the sense of ensuring that everyone feels part of it? Do you have mechanisms where, you know, you can help identify those kids that maybe aren't yet connecting? And how do we reach those students?
Well, we have a lot of structures, whether you talk about the teams. The teams know all their students inside and out. They meet with counselors, who also know those students inside and out. But we also have other ways. There'll be guidance activities in X-Pod where they'll talk about an iceberg and what you see about me and what you don't know about me. And then that's shared with the counselors, and counselors can see and take that in with their students. We can sometimes just even simply survey them and ask them how things are going and what's working and what's not in the school. But there's multiple contact points that we have with our students that allow us to get a sense of, is there a way that we can provide support? We're developing two chill spots in the middle school with the help of the Education Foundation, where we can maybe even manipulate the schedule a little bit. And, you know, I hear about how in the high school, they have this lunch where they all can be with their peers, but it doesn't matter what grade you're in. In the middle school, it does matter for lunch, what grade you're in, because you're going to be eating with all sixth graders. Well, what if there's a seventh or eighth grader that has similar connections to you? So we're working with maybe having the eighth and seventh grade. It's not for everyone, but like, will there be an opportunity to form a group where we can be together during seventh and eighth grade? And they can eat lunch together? And again, find a peer that you feel like you connect with.
I love that. That's great.
How hard is it? Such a, like, sixth graders are still there, just barely.
Yeah. It's only seventh and eighth graders who love the chill spot. And sixth grader can use it, but the lunch opportunity actually only happens in the schedule for seventh and eighth grade. So, but yeah.
Sixth graders are only developing their human intelligence.
It's a really tough population because it's like, the bulk of their puberty years, where they're going from little children to...
And many at very different times.
In different ways, right? With all different emotions and responses to how they do it.
Do all the grades do SDL? Or is it just for everybody?
So sixth grade has an opportunity to do it through exploratory, where kids can choose. But seventh and eighth grade have SDL.
And does every child do it? Is it, or is it more voluntary or is it like everyone's?
So every child in seventh and eighth grade gets to pick what they want to do during SDL.
There are times that a teacher might tap someone and be like, I'd really love for you to come see me in social studies. I think it'd be helpful. And then, but one of our goals is to make sure that there is opportunities for students to have that choice. I think it's very, we both feel it's deeply important to them.
It's like a preview to office hours in high school.
There's even, so we have clubs, but then the kids can meet. So your advisors meet after school. But during SDL, Science Olympiad kids who love it, we can find someone and a place that they can be supervised. And they're working on their own on the project that they're after school they're working with. So it's enrichment in all sorts of ways.
That's great.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's been fun.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm so sorry.
No, please.
That the sense of community is continuously being addressed and that no child left behind. And we've been looking at that because we know the rise in depression, anxiety, adolescence is through the roof, especially even pre-pandemic, but post-pandemic. So, and those middle school years are so pivotal. So we appreciate you, you know, always being cognizant of that.
I love them.
And I've said it before, but the fact that you know every single child in your school is amazing. And it's great because I stand in the hallway with either one of you and every child who goes by, you greet by name.
How could you not, right? How could you not, right?
Yeah, thank you.
And I think your focus on belonging is really critical because it's, there's a theory that this is based on, it's part of Maslow's hierarchy of needs where kids have to have their basic needs met, they have to have food, shelter, they need to have love, they need to have, you know, and then feel a sense of belonging. And belonging comes before you can get to self-actualization and academic achievement in Maslow's hierarchy. So I think if you don't feel you belong, you feel isolated, you can't achieve at your best.
Or take risks or.
Yeah, and that wellness as well. And that's going back to Mark Brackett's work that emotions are integrally tied to cognition. So you can't address one without the other. So flipping over to the rigor side, let's talk a little bit about the rigor at the middle school as well and your focus on academics. So with all this team building and collaboration, there's still that focus on high achievement and supporting students. What are ways students get academic support, first of all, academics, where are their opportunities?
So, I mean, we spoke about S D L. There's also during X-Pod at times. And then we have, we can identify through multiple measures if students need some additional support or if they're going to benefit from enrichment because they have met an area where they're ready to soar. So, I mean, we have that opportunity in all of our subjects, but especially if you look at math and English, we provide that academic intervention services when we think a student might need that support.
Right. And that's during the, after school, during the school day?
We try to schedule it when it's best met by the students' needs.
And we also offer it in the summer as well.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We have a great summer academy.
So you mentioned math. Let's talk about math a bit. And I know Lisa's going to come to a later department meeting and talk a little bit more in depth about.
Board meeting.
Board meeting, what did I say? Department meeting. This is your department meeting, I guess. And talk about more in depth in mathematics and sort of a review of some of the work she's been doing. But just talk about the work we've been doing over the last, is it now seven years, Lisa, with the pathways and shift, which started in the middle school in seventh grade? We spent three years studying it and then implementing it. In order, our goal was to provide more opportunities for more students to take higher levels of math and to succeed at math. And it was based on data we had that. We were seeing too many students once they were juniors not succeeding in math. And so we wanted to shift that. So can we talk a little bit about just some initial impressions and your assessment of that work?
Yes. So before I get into that, I wanted to have one other area that we do offer assistance in the middle school is we have a very successful, long-established program where mu alpha theta students from the high school come down and work with our middle school students at the Math and Mark Center. We will be continuing that this year as well. Both the high school students and the middle school students both love that. It's exceptionally successful. They come back even after they have all of their service points requirements fulfilled. They just love working with them. So if you do have a child and they're watching in the middle school, send them to the homework center. It's, it's been great.
And Lisa, what is mu alpha theta for those who might not know what that is?
Mu alpha theta, or some of the students like to say mu alpha theta. So it's, you know, spells math like if you just do their M A T H. And that's our Math Honor Society. So our requirement has several steps to it. Part of it is academic and part of it is service-oriented. And so the students that are being initiated complete ten, ten service opportunity points by March 31st. And some of that comes from working with our middle school students. So that's an excellent opportunity for them. And then in terms of our opportunity for acceleration, it was interesting because when Chris was talking about the schedule and how none of the students that are in high school now have experienced the old schedule, and I thought to myself about experiencing the old model of acceleration and just how different and more nuanced this model feels, that it would be very hard to switch back to it. You know, Kim and I and Angelo are always kind of looking at the data and trying to see where are we succeeding, where are there challenges, where can we move forward? But I can tell you the fact that the students have multiple opportunities for entry into acceleration is a game changer. Some students show that readiness, you know, we can see it right at the start of seventh grade, some of it is throughout seventh grade, there's some students we'll see at the start of eighth grade. And then there are students that are not ready until ninth, you know, early ninth, middle ninth, end of ninth. And both of those students get the opportunity to accelerate. So we are seeing larger numbers of students going through and being accelerated, whether that's in the middle school or high school. We are starting to see improvements grade-wise in the students that are accelerated. We're going to have to start teasing out that COVID data just because I think it'd be more valuable data to see it kind of now that we're past the pandemic a couple of years, what does that data look like? But I can tell you anecdotal, Lisa, talking with the students and the parents, they very much appreciate those additional opportunities for acceleration because we see a lot of students that in middle school are just figuring themselves out. And, you know, I say this as a mom and middle schooler, but, you know, my child comes home and I'm like, where's your work? Where's your pants? Like, what's going on? And, you know, I, I think just sometimes they just need a little bit more time to ripen, but that doesn't mean they're not going to be great. So so far, I think what we've seen is just some, some wonders, things coming out of the process. Kim, Angelo and I have a meeting, I believe in two weeks with the teachers, just kind of to loop back with everyone at the middle school and say, okay, what are we seeing? What are we seeing in terms of success and where are opportunities for us to continuously improve?
Agreed. I just know that when we, when we look at the old model, there was so much pressure for students because this was the only shot that they, I looked at numbers and there was like eighty, there were so many students getting in and some of them needed a little more time, as you said, and we couldn't give them that time. And now we can give them that time and they're going to be in the same place and they're going to be so much better mathematically in their, their foundation for it. So it took so much pressure. Talk about challenge, success and pressure. There was so much pressure because that was your only shot. So.
The shot happened at the end of sixth grade, right?
Right, it was really the end of sixth. Yeah. And if you really want to see some amazing pedagogy that's come out of it, what it's generated is this kind of eight or nine-year shift towards rich tasks in mathematics classroom. We have a consultant in the middle school we've been working with who's fabulous. If you look at the amount of work and effort that goes in by that seventh grade team, it's outstanding. I invite anyone to come up to the high schools and the ninth grade team, they're insane. They are the most hard-working group of individuals I've ever met. They're here daily for hours after school, planning for multiple different opportunities for enrichment for students on a daily basis, different versions of lessons, different versions of questioning, of rich tasks. And it's truly amazing, so.
So Lisa, just for clarity, that would be the Algebra I course you're talking?
Correct.
Because now we're seeing a wider range in Algebra I as a result of slowing the advancement down. But then in Algebra I, at the end, students will have that opportunity to accelerate again. And that was happening at high school pathway when kids are out of middle school, let it be decided later. So you have a range. So you talked about the work they're doing. How do teachers address the range of abilities in a math classroom in Algebra I, which is such a foundational core curriculum for success in the upper level math?
So I, I can't say this enough, they, they work a tremendous amount. So they work for hours a day on how they're going to split and regroup the students within a week and within a period. So they will take a particular group, decide kind of what the task or what the skills they want to accomplish for that day are, and then decide how they're going to move the students around to the various classrooms. So it could be kind of with their home-based teacher, it could be home-based teacher, and then switch. That way, kids are seeing a variety of teaching styles, they're getting more close-knit contact with teachers, and they're hearing from a variety of different folks in terms of what might be tips for them to be successful. I can tell you, we have an eye on everyone now. All of the algebra teachers now have a pulse on the entire algebra student body and they're able to adapt in real time, which is really exciting.
So just maybe a preview of more to come when we come back to the board. What's maybe one of your biggest challenges you're grappling with in the math department right now?
I think one of the biggest challenges, and Kim kind of alluded to it, is there's still a feeling sometimes of that first time that the acceleration is presented, that that has to be the time. And I think just that messaging and that understanding with the community that even if that's a time, it's not the time. And just understanding kind of what does make someone a good candidate? Because much like, you know, any admissions process or any selection process, it's not necessarily an exact science, but rather an art to it. So I think just trying to hone in on what have we seen that does make good predictions or better predictions about whether a student's going to be successful later on and which faculty is right for them.
So Lisa, we'll be back to talk more in depth about the math department in a little bit. So be looking forward to that. And Jen Layton also is coming in December to talk to us. So we'll get more in depth with them. Let's get a little airtime before we wrap up to our elementary folks who are sat in the front row and haven't spoken yet. So let's talk to them. And let's, since we're going down this way, this was a change in the last, from the last few years, we'll go to Dave first. Dave, let's talk about, talk about your academic priorities. So I've said before here that I feel like Wampus is really this interesting place curricularly where students are in that upper elementary, they're starting to get more intense academic curriculum, especially between third and fifth is a big shift. And as you feel that obligation to prepare students for the rigor of the middle school as well as the emotional readiness for the middle school, talk about some of your, your top academic priorities at Wampus that teachers are focusing on this year.
So we continue to have a focus on literacy. All the grade levels are making priorities. K-5, something they really want to focus on this year, which is, which is good. One example of that that I think is kind of good to highlight is our fourth grade team has really decided to look at read-alouts, right? Our curriculum wonders has interactive read-alouts, kind of getting feedback that they're kind of short on what do we do with novels? How do we really dive into this? What is our read-aloud, right? A read-aloud is not just reading the book in front of kids and being done like a storytime, right? It's really, how do you prompt those questions? What are you looking for? How do you interact with the kids? What are you looking for out of the kids? So our fourth grade team, one example, is choosing to work with someone on that to really look at different strategies. And what I like about that too is I think, and what's great at Wampus and I think all the elementary teachers do is they see within the curriculum, we have, there's a need to look deeper into a certain area. And they've, they've come to me with that, they've come to Tim about that, and we're doing it, which I think is great. Some other priorities this year, science is a big thing. We have a New York State science test now in fifth grade. We have investigations in science that we have to do. We had a meeting about that today, which don't get confused with our mathematic program investigation. We also have science investigations.
It's like the performance test in science, but it's now not done on one day. It's four investigations that have to be done at some point before they take the test. So it's a different model that the state's implementing now for the first time.
And we're also piloting a science curriculum in third, fourth, and fifth and some at Coleman Hill as well. So I would say those are the, the big priorities right now.
And I'll be sharing with the board at next month's meeting our detailed literacy goals. We have been working on them since the literacy study last year, worked on them over the summer. We're now getting teacher input and feedback and have developed a pretty comprehensive document, I think it's nine or 10 pages of our literacy goals broken down. And Dave gave one example of the grade level. We also have school-wide focus as well. And what strikes me at an elementary school and particularly Wampus that starts the state test in third grade, so there's a little bit of upping that pressure, is how we help teachers manage the focus on four content areas. Elementary teacher, kindergarten through fifth grade, we have science, social studies, literacy, and math to teach. And all of the standards in all of those four subjects has changed in the last five years. And how do we keep teachers current and relevant in that content and using best practices? How do we manage that? How are you managing that at Wampus?
So there's a few different ways. There's some ideas that we've started to kind of really start talking about last year that I'll get into in a moment. But the, the one thing, the structures of the advisors, right? Those monthly for language arts, for mathematics, for science.
So these are teachers.
Yes.
Representatives from every grade level.
From every, yeah, grade level. And we meet with Tim and all the way from Coleman Hill, so we have representatives K-5 there along with Tim. And that's an opportunity to talk through all these different things, the priorities, what are we doing on the grade levels? It's also an opportunity, so we talk and we know from grade level to grade level of what's going on. That's a structure in place and potentially, potentially, fifth grade, we've really started to talk about the possibility of departmentalizing a bit. It's a conversation that started about, about a year ago now. We're doing some visits to some neighboring districts that have the idea. There's a lot of different models out there.
Explain what departmentalizing means to you.
So not turn it into a middle school. I do not have any intent of doing that. It's an opportunity for teachers to really become specialists in certain areas, right? If you look at secondary teachers, they teach one thing five times sometimes, right? And they're very specialized in that. So I've spent a lot of time with the fifth grade team, Lisa and I, going to them, talking about the opportunity to possibly do partner teachers. So if Lisa and I were partner teachers, Lisa may teach humanities, language arts, social studies, maybe I would teach science and mathematics. And we have a team, so the schedule wouldn't really be impacted much. We have our five academic periods. We're deciding our schedule of what those kids need for that week. It's almost, it can almost have like a callback period that used to be, you know, does that still happen in middle school? I don't know. Yeah, okay. Kind of like, I know it did a few years ago. So it's something we talk a lot about with the fifth grade team, you know? And I think also when we look at, when we go from lower elementary to middle elementary to middle school, it actually kind of fits nicely. If you think of third grade, you have one teacher for all academics. Currently in fourth and fifth, you change for one subject. But it actually kind of makes sense to ultimately prepare them for sixth grade if you have one teacher in third grade. You have mainly one except for one subject in fourth. And then in fifth, you're, you're, you have two teachers leading to eight teachers in sixth grade. So I also like the projection of that, of how we're ultimately preparing these kids in those.
What's your?
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, we've been having a lot of conversations to see if this is a good model. What's your feeling about how students would respond? You know fifth grade students really well. You also know sixth grade students really well. Do you feel they're ready for that partner teacher? Do you have two teachers now and then be switching?
I definitely.
Go for it, Lisa.
Yeah. We definitely believe that they are ready for that shift. You know, there's always that excitement of just taking on more responsibilities and being more independent and really having them earn that and show that they are ready for that. They are definitely moving in that direction. The students really want to show that they are ready to embrace that change and they do that in different ways. And a lot of different ways that we do that even in Wampus would be even like the leadership opportunities and just really having them show their peers, show their teachers that they are ready to be the leaders of the next generation. The teachers are definitely excited about that opportunity also to just go deeper into the curriculum and really be able to have the students explore all the different ways that they can, once again, like show that they can succeed once it gets to H C C. I like to call this the bridge school and just.
Like trying to think of a nickname for a while.
The bridge school just keeps sticking. But again, just really trying to prepare them from, you know, from third grade, fourth, fifth, going on to sixth grade.
And our goal is specific to, to, you know, creating independent and competent learners and leaders. I think this is another opportunity to help that.
Will the teachers need special training for that?
So we're starting, great question. So we're starting with a visit. We have a couple neighboring districts that have been doing it. The model's slightly different than what we would consider, but we're going there in about a month, the, the one district to really talk to the teachers about it. We've already gotten feedbacks from some districts about how they feel. And that's kind of like, let's get, get the teachers there and have them first look at, okay, is this really something we want to continue to pursue? is this really something we want to continue to pursue? And then, yeah, that would be an opportunity if we need to. I mean, they teach all four subjects, as Tim said, so I don't think they need more training. I think it gives them more of an opportunity to just really become expert in that area.
Time is always an issue. And so I, I think within this model, it gives them some more time, even though we're not adding time to the day. It allows them that kind of freedom to just kind of delve deeper where they can. Because as we said, that's what elementary teachers do. We kind of do all of it. So the chance to do just a few things feels kind of like a rich opportunity.
And guess what? The last thing I really like about it from the perspective of the child is that there's now another adult that knows them really well, right? Elementary by nature, you're with one person for the majority of every day, right? And the teachers are wonderful, that's great. Sometimes it's not the best, right? For whatever reason, right? It's just not, let's call a spade a spade. So now there's another teacher that I think, you know, gets to have collegial conversations about this kid's development, academic progress. They know the parents, they know who the siblings were. That's a recipe for success ultimately when we hand them off to Kim and Angela.
What's extracurricular like at Wampus these days?
So we're making, so I love the belonging stuff because we've tried, you know, today we had 90 children stay at Wampus after school, which is the largest we've ever had. It was actually overnight, that was just one program. Dismissal is interesting, we're going to work on that. But we had 90 students, Liza Devaney, I give her a lot of credit. She runs our Wampus Extended Learning Program. It's traditionally done in fourth grade. This year, with the help of Gina, we expanded it to third grade where we offer not only three additional learning opportunities, but we also are offering Mandarin. So we had third grade students doing that. And we had our homework center running today, which started by Heidi Marchesini last year. We had to play after school, right? There was a lot of kids there after school now. But when I hear about belonging and what everyone's doing, right? Traditionally, kids get on the IBM or activity bus and they, they leave to go to activities, which is great. But we're trying to start to create more.
Love that.
Bravo.
Great.
It's the Chris Walsh money.
We're going to beat them all up to you guys.
Don't get on that bus.
That's amazing.
And that was just well, yeah, it was good.
Got those operations working. Thanks for that. Thanks for the detail. And Peggy, I got the same question. What are the academic priorities for these young learners? And even, you know, even with our youngest, we're focused on academics so early, even maybe times we don't want to, right? Can we govern them? But we, there is a start of academics.
Certainly. So listening to all of this, you know, we get to all of that because of the gateway school. You know, our job is to welcome all these families into Byram Hills, right? Take that seriously. The one big shift that's happening at Coleman Hill right now is the slowdown of curriculum to really focus on the development of language. If we don't do language well and right, we can't do all of that. I would say that the biggest subtle change this year is the focus on speaking and listening in our kindergarten classrooms. One of our biggest, biggest challenges is we are pulling, so all of you had kindergartners come through the BHP, the BHPSTA, whatever that is, the preschool association.
Yes, that's what BHP.
SOX, right? SOX, right? So we used to have a monopoly of a nursery school. Now we have 47 nursery schools that we're pulling in from. So that is a challenge because when we do our initial screenings and we see what children know and understand coming into kindergarten, no one understands.
No, not 47.
Forty-seven nursery schools we're pulling in from. So it's, so that's amazing. It's amazing, right? It's amazing. It's also interesting because of the different priorities from our nursery schools.
That's probably a lot of people, sorry, back to people moving in.
You're all, minds are blown because you're collecting all the data.
Correct. We're on board now.
Figure that out, with the process.
Sorry.
What's awesome about that is the diversity that comes with that. What's challenging with that is we can pretty much study what the focus is of nursery school is for our children. We know that we need to focus on language. Most importantly, it's speaking and listening for those four and five-year-olds and six-year-olds. So we have four-year-olds in kindergarten classrooms and six-year-olds, right? That range is great. So the focus of language and slowing down our curriculum in kindergarten and first grade especially, I just want to thank all of you for the additional personnel to help our kindergarteners, really focusing on speaking and listening. We know rushing a curriculum doesn't help children, it only really overwhelms them. Our job is not to teach curriculum, our job is to teach children. The next layer to that, and I'll be really quick right now, is the best way we do that is through the collective efficacy of our teams. So we are really focusing on making sure every one of our teachers feels like they belong, making sure every one of our teachers is entrusted to make the right pedagogical decisions. Because when you are teaching young children how to read, you are teaching them in a customized approach. There's not a one size fits all to the development of reading. There's not a one size fits all to, I'm just focusing on reading. Our children have to learn to comprehend from the very moment they enter Coleman Hill in kindergarten. So we focus on reading comprehension as much as we focus on teaching reading. But before all of that comes speaking and listening. And they're not one without the other. You can't do one first and the other. It is an abstract approach to teaching children the development of language, which they need for reading, writing, math, science, social studies, global scholars, all of the things that I'm. And so at the heart of what we do is we foster a sense of community, the first taste of community, and we develop language through that.
What I love that Peggy talks about, and we used, have said this a lot, that it starts in kindergarten. All our successes at high school, all our amazing successes is start, you know, it starts at development kindergarten and then is really builds at every grade level because of the care and attention that all of these people and our teachers give our students. Peggy and I have had a lot, long conversations about the work that came through out of our literacy study last year. And you'll see this when we present the detailed goals. What Peggy's really speaking about is two things that we've talked about is early intervention is really critical to literacy success. And the research shows if students, you really have kindergarten and first grade to try to get that early language skills down and for students to crack the code of phonics. After that, it just gets harder for kids to catch up. You can catch them up, but each year after first grade just gets a little harder. So that's why we're putting a lot of focus on our early intervention in kindergarten and first grade. And also right now, we're in a, a review of our process for catching kids and the interventions that we put in place and the assessments we use. And the second is that connection between oral language and the print and making that direct connection. And the kindergarten teachers are looking at a particular oral language program so that we can be really consistent, explicit, and deliberate in what we're teaching students in terms of that oral language to print connection.
How do you identify the opportunities for early intervention? When you've got four to six-year-olds in kindergarten, like how do you differentiate between what's just, they're just not developmentally ready because they're four years old versus there's potentially?
So Mia, what's really challenging about that too is the parent factor, right? Parents have a lot of questions about their child's development. As the experts in the building, our teachers know that, hmm, if you're not saying that R-controlled vowel yet and you're seven, it's really not developmentally appropriate until you're actually eight. But to the parent, they're saying eight. But my, my child's peer was over yesterday on a playdate and they were saying, and my child's not. What do you do for my child? I tell parents all the time, call us, talk to us. If your child is not qualifying for an early intervention program, it doesn't mean that in six weeks they might not qualify. It also doesn't mean that in the classroom today, your teacher is giving those customized individual lessons to that child to give them what they need. We will never let a child fail. But also in the next breath, letting your children struggle in kindergarten and first grade and second grade sets them up nicely for Wampus. If they have these little pebbles, right? And mom and dad, if you have these little pebbles, you only help parent your child better as they grow. So if you're worried about your child's reading, call us, trust us. We will educate your child, that's our job. We went to school for that, we're good at it, and this whole system rides on that.
And we are reviewing that process of identifying students through screening. How do we screen kids? How do we then dig deeper to isolate the specific skills that students need interventions in? And how do we monitor that process as we do those interventions? So we're looking at that process at every building right now. Tomorrow, we actually have a middle and high school looking at that process through a review of our, it's called MTSS. You've heard me present that in my goals, multi-tiered system of supports. Not to get lingo-y on you, but it's our process for identifying students where they are academically and if they're meeting the standards and then how we get them caught in it. So Peggy's speaking of that. Go, go on, Lara.
You mentioned about the, the language and listening. I'm trying to think this, so this class would have been at the height of the pandemic three, right?
Current kindergarten.
Kindergartners would have been, so I'm just curious, what impact? Because they were, and a lot of them are coming from Manhattan, from the city. They were really not even in classes, they were virtual, they weren't masked, if they weren't.
Is that what our?
I think our kindergartners are impacted.
Our current kindergartners never, they're coming to us fresh without the masks for the most part, right?
But how well were they, like, I mean, they were.
Children.
Well, they were young, there were two, there were a four and a five school.
Okay.
The other.
So it's good to see now, Lara.
And now you can see.
But the other variable that we do take very thoughtfully is when they come from many different nursery schools, some of the skills they possess, they might perform better on a screening. Every kindergartner in our district gets screened when they come into us, okay? They might perform a little differently. Our teachers really are thoughtful in terms of who qualifies for interventions because if the nursery school taught it, often the child knows it. But if the nursery school didn't focus on it, the child might not know that. That does not mean they're at a deficit, it means they haven't been taught that yet.
There's no standard, there's no standards, right? We get each.
Well, that's what, there are standards, there are pre-K standards. There's the police, there's the police. There are standards.
Peggy and I have had some conversations about how we can help, I wouldn't say educate our preschools, but provide a resource to our preschool, not that, not what you want, Peggy. But how do we provide a resource to our preschool saying, here's the things that we feel focused on coming into our kindergarten?
And how do we do it when we get 47 from places that are? Ah, there is usually that transition time from the spring registration until school starts. Then it's, we can do that with parents.
We're trying to have some conversations about that piece to help our transition.
We want to help educate our parents, right? They're trying to do everything that's right and best for their child.
So I went over my self-imposed hour timeline, I apologize. But does the board want any other questions? It's your call. We, I can get to everybody, I could go on for another hour, but I'm sure you don't want to. But I want to thank everyone, I'm sorry if I didn't get to you, but I'll, whatever you, the board wants. Do we want to hear from others? Anyone?
No.
I have asked all my questions.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone, we're good?
So the next presentation is going to be Lights Learning Action, the BHHS Initiative. And you have all seen it. And I once again just want to thank you for everything that you've done tonight and everything you're going to continue to do in six hours. Thank you so much for taking the time.
Moving on to unfinished business, 11.1.
All right. Unfinished business, 11.1 is, we have none. Right. 12 is new business. We did that one already, but I also have two, which is the BH, 12.2, the BHHS.
12.2, BHHS Initiative, Jen.
Okay. Wow. I am very excited tonight to be presenting to the community our special report, which is, and Tim, you're probably going to have to click the.
Can you maybe click the special report?
Yeah. And then I colored that.
Oops. Open the access.
You already have access. Sorry about that.
Over.
Sorry.
Anticipation.
Dun, dun, dun. All right. Tim, I thought you already had access, sorry. Ready editor.
There we go.
Got it? Okay. So very excited about our Byram Hills High School Initiative called Lights Learning Action. And I would like, although not in that order, I would like to thank Jen Fuenzalita, a world languages teacher at the high school, who modified my original title, BHHS Initiative. I, I admitted, I offered a $25 Starbucks gift card for anyone who could come up with something better. And this is beautiful. So thank you, Jen. Lights Learning in Action. This is going to be a proposed three-year project with three phases. The first phase is the learning, and that is called the Learning Commons for Byram Hills High School. I will show you that. Phase two is turf field number two, a proposition to do that. And phase three is field and court lighting. And that means our two potential fields, football, et cetera, lacrosse fields, our two main fields, turf fields, our softball, our baseball field, and our tennis courts. So, starting with phase one, with the Learning Commons. We would like libraries that have no shushing. Shushing is not of the 21st century. It is not a skill that we are trying to support in our schools. We want clearly delineated workspaces. We want kids to be in small work rooms. We want demountable walls where they can be in large rooms. We want places where classes can take place and where students can congregate. If you think about any college campus, which we are not, but we certainly are, you want a place for students to be able to go. You want a hub, a central learning location. We want kids to engage with the library in ways that they are not necessarily doing now. Kids are not taking out books to the extent that they took books out years ago. They need resources in the library, but most important, they need opportunities to collaborate and learn together. So our libraries have been redone quite beautifully over the years, especially thanks to the Byram Hills Education Foundation. You can see Coleman Hills renovations, Wampus renovations, and HCC. Now we have current conditions in our Byram Hills Library and Lecture Hall. This is not quite what we see in our other three buildings. I call it cell block nine. This is, I don't know if you're an author, what happens to you in that back corner anymore? And this is not from a lack of librarian's good work. This is actually a result of our librarian's good work. Our librarian, Letty Nardone, visited 12 different libraries. We've been working on this project for a number of years to see what do these library spaces need? During COVID, they needed something very specific. And believe me, this environment was very conducive to COVID, of moving everybody six feet apart from one another and not having an engaging community space. That is not the case anymore. We also have our lecture hall, very similar to the looks of the library. It is set up exactly as it was in the late 60s. As a matter of fact, I think the, the current tabletops and the privacy screens are exactly the same. This is another viewpoint. These pictures don't really do the room justice, it's terrible. It's actually compared to the library, this looks nice, but it's really not. So what we are proposing for phase one, estimated to be completed in March of 2025, is the Byram Hills Learning Commons. A library space where kids can congregate, as I said. We will have a kiosk with food in the main center of the hallway. Larger spaces for kids to get together and talk, smaller spaces for them to work together. We'll have demountable walls between large spaces. We will have an outdoor courtyard off of the library that will be fenced in to protect our children from wildlife, and wildlife from them maybe, I don't know. But we'll have, we'll have an enclosed area outside so that kids can utilize this outdoor space. We've learned so much about the need for kids to be in their natural environment. And here is a proposed lecture hall. You'll notice that these tables, by building up the current concrete structures that we have there, we can afford to have tables where students can congregate together or be a part of a large group. This is the current floor pimp, the entire first floor floor plan, excuse me. But this is the area that we are focusing on. So that yellow up and down is the hallway that is now going to be a main hub of the Learning Commons with a kiosk and with places for students to congregate. You'll see a new library pathway, diagonal pathway that goes through the library with a librarian's kiosk, multiple places for students to sit. To the immediate right of the library, you'll see the small workspaces. Those will have glass walls on either side of them. And then if you look on the bottom, where you have the dotted lines, those are two classroom sizes that will have a demountable wall that can also be used for a large space. So really making libraries what kids need and what teachers need in order to help them. Phase two, Byram Hills High School Turf Field Number Two, estimated completion September 2025. You might say, okay, so if two out of the three things are getting done in September of 2025, why, why is it going to take two years to roll out the rest? And honestly, it's financial amongst other things. The first thing that is a top priority is a learning space. The second, it's what we'd like to do is do a second turf field. So while the Learning Commons will finish in March of 2025, that will take place when school is in session, we are going to take out the practice field, which is next to our current turf field in that summer after the Learning Commons ends. And we anticipate that that field will be ready to go by September. So this is our current footprint and what it looks like and, oh, I'm sorry. As you can see, that is the practice field that is next to it. Once we turf that field, it is probably not going to be wide enough for girls' lacrosse, but it will be wide enough and long enough for every other sport to take place. That doesn't mean that girls' lacrosse doesn't get turf privileges. We have a perfectly good turf field that they should be using if, if it's time for their game. So this is our current rendition. And this is our proposal, that we have a turf field directly next to the current turf field. Very exciting. And if anyone has ever been out to watch a sporting event on what we call the practice field, it, it becomes a dust bowl at a certain time because there's so much activity that's happening on there. We're fortunate that our students are heavily enmeshed in sports. We have difficulty resting fields because we have so much participation. This is really going to ease a lot. This is really going to ease a lot of that burden for us. I also understand that the town is potentially putting in two turf fields, so I'm happy to see that as a community overall, we're going to have more opportunities for kids outside.
Jen, are they going to, before you go on to the big one? Not the big one, but what about seating?
Seating. We are not going to have, first of all, whoever was the person who set up the first turf field, they just didn't realize that every game was going to happen at night when the sun was resting, so that nobody can see. I mean, we still have to look into, is there anything that we can do to modify that experience for parents? But the second turf field is not going to have because of finances and space. We don't have the depth for us to have real bleachers. We will have the portable bleachers like we have everywhere else. And they're.
They have them now, but they're facing the wrong way.
They're facing the wrong way.
They're going to be.
Turned around. Yep. And more of them, so that we can distinguish between home and away teams.
And with the Learning Commons, just given that that construction would happen partially during the school year.
Yes.
I guess we're a little bit fortunate right now in our, our number of students in the building, the lower than it used to be and lower than it will be fairly soon as the younger grades come up. But can we manage it from a space perspective, all the dust and construction activity, just keeping it safe for kids?
So the good news is they're going to do all demolition over the summer. So we're not going to be hearing this jackhammering and, you know, and they're going to be doing the actual construction when kids are in session. So we're going to block off that hallway, there's one classroom that we need to move, and we're hoping to have the lecture hall done first so that that can be sort of a library space for us while the kids are.
What will it mean for universal lunching, because we're going to have less space?
We will not have less space. We'll be fine between the lecture hall and everything, nobody's using the lecture hall now, so between that and everything else, we'll still have enough space. Yeah. Very exciting.
But people are, they're eating in the library, right?
Yep, and they can eat in the lecture hall next year. And phase three, field and court lighting, estimated completion September 2027, that is when the entire project will be complete. This is Wesley. Why are we going to lights now, you may ask? In the past, when we have put, have been to other districts with lights, or when we've contemplated the thought of lights, lights were the type that illuminated the night sky like Westchester Airport. We have people who live in the vicinity of our schools, it was disruptive, to say the least, and we saw other districts and the disruptions that that has caused. These lights today, if you look in the background, you can see that there is no reflection into the night, that the only place that gets illuminated is the field itself. This is the technology we've been waiting for, and we're so excited about it. Our timeline, this is the timeline of when I am actually going to be presenting to, you know what, I should have had, okay. This is the timeline of when we're going to be presenting to everyone. Tonight, Board of Education meeting, I'll be going to the BHEF meeting this week, I'll be talking to Athletic Advisory, students and parents who are on the Athletic Advisory and board members. I will be going to the PTSA meeting to do this presentation, high school principals coffee, and then I'm going to be doing all student leaders in one section. And then I'm going to have student-staff lunch and learns, where I will go into the theater and I will show some of this for any students or staff who are interested in coming to see it. KSQ, our architects, will be coming to present at the Board of Education meeting. We'll have principals' coffees at the rest of our buildings, we'll start our budget hearings, and then we hope in April to have virtual reality where we go into the Learning Commons space with our cell phones, and we can stand in the space and see exactly what it is going to look like, which is super exciting. I want to talk a little bit about the estimated cost, cost for the projects, phase one, which is the Learning Commons, phase two, which is the turf practice field, and phase three, which is field and court lighting, which happens over the course of two years. So in '26, we're hoping to have this done to the two fields here, and by '27, to the rest of the courts and fields. It takes time. So what does this mean? It means that in May, we are going to go out to the community with proposition number one, which is authorization for use of our capital reserve to fund the renovation projects, Lights Learning Action. This is at Byron Hills High School. So shall the Board of Education of Byron Hills Central School District, Westchester County, be authorized to reconstruct the library, lecture hall, and hallway at the high school, install turf field number two, and install lighting on the high school fields and courts and other work required in connection therewith, at a maximum estimated cost of $8,000?
Eight million, unfortunately.
I'm sorry. It's actually the estimated cost of $9 million, but with the amount of, we only have to say eight, because it's $8 million we're being, we're asking to be transferred from the district-wide renovations reconstruction fund, also called the capital reserve. So remember, a number of years ago, we opened up a capital reserve so that we could put money in expressly for purposes like this. And we always knew that a capital reserve required us to go out to the community to say, we've put this money away for this purpose, do we have your permission to spend it? And that is what the proposition is going to be. And that, friends, is it.
Right.
Super exciting.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Adoption of budget materials.
Adoption, 12.3, adoption of budget materials for '24, '25.
This is similar to every year, it's just the calendar, the dates, it has to do with tax report card and our budget hearings and the guidelines and the committee of finance advisory committee charter we do every year, so just hoping for adoption of those today.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the '24, '25 budget materials? Are we adopting this one as well? Or just this one?
Nope, you don't have to adopt.
Okay.
So moved?
Second. All in favor? Okay. Motion carries. 12.4, in the beds report.
All right. So this will be very quick. We, on our beds, data, which is one day in a school year that every school in New York State has to report your current enrollment, we reported 2,342 students. We had 48 student increase from last year to this year. And what is interesting is that besides Dobbs Ferry with an 82 student increase and Portchester with an 83 student increase, we didn't really have any other school that increased more than 20 students. So we are seeing an increase in our enrollment that other districts are not seeing right now, except some of our larger city districts. And that is it for our beds report.
Thank you, John. Moving on to 12.5, the APPR, undue burden independent evaluation hardship waiver.
Sure, this is something we've done for the past three years. This is, this waiver allows our administrators to stay in their building instead of having to go to another building to observe teachers, which is part of the state regulation. The state allows us to ask for a waiver from that part of the regulation. We did do that originally when the APPR changed, we found that it was sort of interesting at first, but it's not really helping teachers. So we continue to ask for that, especially post-pandemic, would rather have our administrators staying in their building. So we just asked the board to approve this application for the hardship waiver.
Thank you, Tim. Can I have a motion to approve the APPR undue burden independent evaluation, evaluate a hardship waiver?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Presentation of the APPR innovative variance.
So the variance is another change of teacher evaluation. We did it for the last three years, which is taking us, it's allowing us for this change. Let me just review quickly. Teachers are evaluated on two categories, observations and student performance, and that equals their overall rating. The variance allows us to shift from rating teachers on how students do on a test to rating teachers on their actions, their professional learning, that then in turn impacts student achievement. We feel, we did it the last three years, we feel it's a much better model, it puts the power in the teacher's hands, and teachers value it more than some random test that the state approves that their evaluation score is based on. So we want to apply again, we can apply for up to three years, so it's another three year variance from that regulation. And I asked the board, I think it's, I recommend it, and I would ask the board to approve this variance.
Thank you, Tim. So can I get a motion to approve the APPR innovative variance?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And moving on to staff reports.
I love that one, Tim.
Another support. Back to your.
Back to me, yeah.
That's down here.
Nope, it's the other one.
Enough presentations there?
I have too many, I think, I'm referred.
Is it after this one?
No, it's on the Board of Education one. Hold on. I think I sent you two. Oh, you're in my other one. That's fine.
Oh, it's this one?
Yeah, there we go.
Is that, click over there?
Yep. Thanks, Tim. It's hard to follow.
Sorry.
All right, Suresh Ali. Wow, congratulations, national merit semifinalist, earned this distinction through his academic achievements, standout from amongst 1.6 million high school students across 22,000 schools nationwide. This places him among the top 1% of all high school seniors in the country, and it underscores his performance on the PSATs, the qualifying test, and paves the way for a lot of opportunities for him. Congratulations, beautiful, wonderful. Our NISMA Area All-State Festival, look at our students, how fantastic. Eight of our talented high school students were selected for this NISMA Area All-State Festival, and they were selected from nearly 600 applicants across Westchester. So congratulations to all of these students, and they're going to perform their ensembles at New Rochelle on November 4th and 5th. Best of luck to you. Love it. This keeps happening. All right, World Language Induction Ceremony. So on Wednesday, we had 65, Byron Hills, if you were wondering how many, 65 Byron Hills High School seniors inducted into the World Language Society, their dedication to the study of French, Italian, or Spanish. Thank you, Melissa. And last but not least, sportsmanship matters. We had quite a few student athletes whose names are up there. The Athletic Department and the Media Communication Center reestablished the importance of sportsmanship on and off the field, and this was shared on the athletic social media platforms and will be used before turf games on our, yeah, I think I need you.
You want a plate?
Yep.
I love this game.
There's no doubt about it. Sports make us feel. Sometimes it's joy, sometimes it's pain.
It's all part of the game. Since I was young, I've always wanted to be here.
When you're in the stands, just remember, we're all out here doing what we love.
So come out.
Cheer for us, support us.
We love it.
But never forget sportsmanship.
When we hear you in the stands, we love it, we're proud.
And when you're screaming at officials or coaches, we hear that too.
Respect the game.
Let the officials officiate.
Let the coaches coach.
And let the players play.
Go Boccas.
Go Boccas. Go Boccas.
That's right. That's perfect.
Where was that? Pushed out.
Social media, and it's going to be before every game we have on the turf. We're going to show it out on our little Jumbotron. Correct. All right, and that is it for me.
Tim?
Nope. No.
Kelly? Just real quickly for me, we finally met with the Department of Health, myself, John Baxter, and our principal engineer on the high school water project. We reviewed the plans in excruciating detail. And there were changes that they still would like us to make, keep in mind, it was submitted in March of 2021. So we're almost there.
This is the process, though?
It's a process, yes. So we're going through that process, we're going to see, once we get approval, we'll bid on the project, see what the cost is. Remember, we did this estimate on the project in 2021, so that cost may have escalated. So we'll get approval, do the bidding process, and kind of go from there. But it should, it's coming to a close soon, actually, or closer to a close. Hopefully we get approval soon.
Closer than we were in 2021.
The last three years, yes.
2022. Thank you, Kelly. Gina, anything?
All set, thanks.
Any board reports?
Nope. Went to a PTSA meeting, which was excellent, they're like Byron Hills soldiers, foot fair and all kinds of things happening in every building, so it was all very positive.
Communications to the board.
There was one.
The entire board?
Mm-hmm. Which one? The email?
There was a, the email, right. Yeah, it was just a, whatever, you don't have to say it like, there was a concern, it was spoken to.
Yep. And that was addressed.
It was addressed.
Okay. Approval of board minutes from September 19th.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Thank you to the board, please go home and put your certificates on your [inaudible].
Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
I know, this is so nice.
Go Boccas.